All right, we have six three, we'll call a meeting to order. Start with the Senate and the Regents, please.
I'm Senator Regent for the House. We have a State of America. And to the public, permission, say. One nation under God, neither will ever change us as a tribe.
All right, do we have any additions for the agenda? Okay. So, the motion to approve the...
What question?
Motion second. All pairs say aye.
Aye.
All pairs. Motion carries four zero. Open up for public comments, if anyone would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please come forward. And we're going to close public comments and move to the contested agenda. Anything else in the contested agenda, uh, refer to discussion. And also, would the motion approve the... To approve the contested agenda as we enter? Motion second. Motion second, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
All pairs. Motion carries four zero. Six, say one maybe, uh, Sheriff's Department.
Okay, so, um, Commander Mike Wallen is here today to introduce himself. He, um, is taking the position that Paul Cheetah once held. Just wanted to do an introduction today, so...
Thank you Maggie, good afternoon Council, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm Mike Wallen, been with the Sheriff's Office since two thousand and five. Um, worked in different aspects, within patrols, patrol supervisor, uh, last two years prior to my, um, promotion to Commander. I, uh, worked in our investigative unit as our detective sergeant overseeing investigations. Um, had opportunities to work with Councilman Bolder, uh, as a, as a partner, as well as on our tactical team. Same thing with, um, Corporal Bengston as well. So, it's a pleasure to meet all of you, appreciate your time tonight, and, uh, thank you.
Congratulations on your motion. I look forward to working with you. Do you want any questions right now? I appreciate you coming in, um, and we'll continue to work with you and, um, as...
Appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, this is an item that we've been talking about at the last few meetings. Um, just an update, we were able to, um, so, again, during the audit, we determined that some funds had the potential to be closed due to lack of use and need. Um, the funds either have balances in them that would be transferred to other accounts for future use. Um, there's one account, the FEMA fund, um, the Fund Two Fifteen. Um, that is a fund that, since like two thousand, early two thousands, has been used, um, for grant funds to, for the fire department. So, each year, we've kind of received funds in and out. We've, we've applied for the grant funds, like, and then usually we get them a year or two later. So, sometimes we'll spend, we would spend the money and then we'd get reimbursed a year or two later. So, that's, that's, um, kind of what we're talking about tonight. Um, right now, there's a negative balance, so about ten thousand in there. Um, and so, the audit, as part of the audit, they recommended that we close that account since we weren't using it anymore. Um, I did provide kind of a summary of, uh, we were able to work with previous staffs to kind of get a history of, of this account and kind of find a little more information. Um, so, on page twenty-two is kind of a FEMA account history, kind of from two thousand and four, kind of the increases and decreases from the prior year in that account. So, as you can see, it kind of fluctuates, um, from positive to negative. And again, I think that's because, um, we would apply for the grants, we'd, we'd spend some money, and then we'd get reimbursed the next year or two years later. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep. Okay. So, I think that's why the balance shows, shows that. Um, and then, moving on, um, more recently, the city received grants in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen for fire department equipment. The grant covers ninety-five percent of the amount spent, so the city was required to contribute five percent. And it looks like, um, if you look at the expenses, um, we do have like the FEMA capital outlay, the FEMA new equipment, fire equipment and new equipment. And like, while, what I noticed is, yes, we were spending that ten percent, I mean, that five percent in a different fund. I think the main thing is that in that April two thousand and fifteen, it got coded to the new equipment, which is a grant, and, um, a different grant fund, so it wasn't the two one five. But then we made a journal entry for, um, a higher amount, that, um, either during the audit or the previous city administrator made a journal entry. So, what I think happened is, um, that ninety-five percent that we got refunded, got coded to the two twelve, and then a journal entry was later made to correct it, which I think included the a hundred percent. Does that make sense? So, the amount that should have been put in, um, the other equipment fund, um, that wasn't a two fifteen fund, got transferred back into that fund, um, which shouldn't have. So, I think there was just a little, um, miscoding, and then there was like a journal entry that was made that kind of, um, brought, brought that negative balance. Uh, and then, as you can see, the city did receive the appropriate amount of reimbursement from FEMA, so those, that shows the ninety-five percent that was given each time, and that, those were coded into a revenue account. And then, I just provided like a FEMA grant history, I was able to find that, kind of what we received, the ninety-five percent since two thousand and three, and then what the city was paying for that five percent and the total amount that we were, we received each year. So, um, if you have any questions, I'll take those now. Otherwise, I do have a resolution, and I did, um, I did suggest taking it out of the Fire Truck Fund, which is two ten, because that's the fund that it should have been, would, like, if we were to code it today, that's where it would come out of, for fire equipment. So, um, I'm just saying, like, if, yeah, if we did buy the equipment today, which, would, would actually come out of a general fund, fire department fund, but since it was, this is a fund balance that is from a previous year, or this is a balance from a previous year, I would take it out of the, the fund, the fire department truck fund.
Is the truck fund, you're saying, or the equipment fund?
Yes. Yep. You only have one. Yep. I didn't, I kind of made the decision on my own, just because that's the fund that it would come out regardless, like, if, if we were to purchase it anyways. Like, I think it was, the, the thing is, is that it was in that fund, and it just got, the journal entry took it out of that fund. So, it, it was in there, it just got pulled out and put into that two fifteen. And then, as part of that resolution, we would also, um, talk about, we would also close the four hundred fund and transfer, um, that's for the seventieth street improvement fund. That has a balance of forty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven eighty-six. We would close that fund and put it in the street improvement fund. And then, the, um, the balance for the two twenty-two fund, we would close, that's for the park improve, um, that is from the old, I think, Old Schoolhouse Park, and that would be transferred into the park improvement fund, which is a two twenty fund. And that resolution should say April eighth.
Motion for further discussion. Thanks for being here, I'm on a most unpleasurable task, but I appreciate it. A lot of money to use that to ensure that you're aware of it, so I appreciate that. But we try to serve staff on that, it's hard, but, it's hard, I understand, if we got a story to do, so I appreciate that. And I'm comfortable with you deciding on the fire department, where that structure is appropriate, but we should have eyes and mouth.
Yep, I will.
So he's aware of it, so he knows, uh, you know, if, I don't know how tight you manage to be, but I'm pretty aware of it.
Okay.
Any other, um, discussion? All pairs say aye.
Aye.
All pairs. Motion carries four zero.
Yep.
Six, say three, please. Three, four.
Okay, so, I know this was talked about, um, about a year ago. Um, we're just trying to, staff has been kind of working on this, the street, Winter Street Parking Ordinance Amendment, um, for a little bit, because there have been some issues with coenforcement. I know, um, Paul Cheetah had, had brought it up as well, and same with Gary Stolkey, um, that it is, right now, the way that our code is written is really difficult to enforce, um, cars that park on the street, um, because it says that we need to have an inch of accumulation before we can start moving cars. Um, so, one thing that we did was we looked at other communities, kind of what their ordinance stated, and then we also, um, kind of looked at their signs and how they structured things, and what we're proposing is we're keeping the same, we would keep the same date, November first to April first, that we would just say no parking on either side of the street. And I, I actually, this might change, I think Public Works is proposing ten P M. to eight A M., so that, um, overnight, they, otherwise midnight to eight A M., um, just so that they can get out and they can plow and, and clean the streets. Um, 'cause right now, it's, it's difficult to enforce because it's a measurement, and it's just, it's hard to go out there and enforce it and debate with somebody if it's an inch or not. Um, so, we're just trying to clean up our code a little bit, make it a little bit more administratively friendly, and, um, so I did include some pictures of the signs. We did get a cost estimate, um, the signs would be about thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents each. We would need about sixteen to eighteen of them, which would be about six hundred dollars for replacing and adding a few more signs. We would have to work with MINDOT to put some on twenty-five, um, but, um, we would just replace the ones that we currently have at the entrances of the neighborhoods, and then we would try and add some with, in MINDOT's permission, um, on twenty, on Highway twenty-five. Um, so I guess, we're looking, I guess, I mean, we do have a proposed ordinance in place that would amend the code, otherwise, we're looking for some direction as to council's thoughts on this. Um, it's something, yeah, the staff has been working on.
How big of an issue is this really?
Um...
I mean, how many cars are we looking at personal fault?
Once we really kind of started enforcing the code, we'd have, we'd be better, but as far as the warranty, it's kind of, 'cause we go off salt and everything else, and then we, depending if it is, um, some, if it's an inch or less, it's sometimes we're going to split it off too, depending on what the, you know, format, like later, if you get an inch or so, it's about thirty-three below, you know, then that snow's not going to go anywhere, and salt's not going to work.
Yeah. Because I guess my concern is, I have looked at a lot of other cities that have there's enforcement of midnight to eight A M., and you have the, you have the issue where people do park on the street, you guys are working days, and you're plowing what you can plow during the day. I don't know if I'm willing, willing to change our city ordinance and pay overtime, just so you can come out and plow from eight, or from midnight to eight A M., and that's the coldest point of the weather anyway, and everything's kind of frozen then, anyway. I don't, I, from what I've gathered and what I've seen, and, 'cause I drive around too and just kind of monitor what the small fall people are doing, I have not, other than on twenty-five, I have not really seen an issue of cars in the street where the falls have had to go around them. So thus, I'm wondering if there's really such a big issue?
We, we got a...
I mean, I've seen Seventh Street has a, has an issue.
Seventh Street, cold water crossing, hidden trail.
We definitely have an issue on twenty-five.
Yeah.
And I think that's where Paul and Gary had the issue with twenty-five.
And, I mean, to, to be honest, ninety-nine percent of our snow removal operations do take place at night, because it's safer for us and the general public to remove the snow at night. So, that's, I mean, we do what we can during the day, but most of the time, the snow doesn't end until early morning or late at night, so that's when we usually jump in.
Usually you would open up, they call it an open up, so you just come and do one...
Correct.
One, one through.
Mhm. But if, I mean, if we could plow it and get it done right away in the, during the day, we'll do that, and then we come back later at night when the cars are moved and kind of get everything pushed back, but...
So, how much extra time is that going to be, and then how much overtime is that going to be, especially when we're looking at the cost of buying all these signs and everything else? I would say...
I, I guess the way we looked at it is, it wouldn't change the operations, like, very much at all. Like, they would still plow the same as they've been pl- plowing before.
Now, you got cars in the streets during the daytime, and now you got falls that I have to go around it.
Well, we've been using...
Right. Because you don't have a police officer from midnight to eight A M., so who's going to enforce it anyway? And, and if, and if people really can't sit there with a ruler and go, "That's one inch."
Yeah, I, um, so, when we did talk about this, and we did these council packets on Friday, and because of work and everything else, I didn't have a lot of time to go back and research, but we have reasons why we did what we did. Can't remember them, but...
Why there's one inch, or why, why are we proposing this?
Instead of the no parking from X amount to X amount.
I'm not sure, that's, this is in the policies.
When we set the, this is what's going on, you know, more than we already know. And we certainly haven't cut down on the work schedule in the past, or through it. So, that's why, I'm not like ready to vote on this at all.
Okay.
Even though I want to just research which one's better.
Right.
But, yeah, I see enforcement issues, I see issues with people who have companies and holidays and things like that, and they park on the street, there's an issue with the border, you know, they don't all get in their driveway where they should go, we have no...
Yeah, good question.
We have no return.
Mhm.
So, I, I mean, there's just some research.
I think we have time, I mean, this is for next snowfall, granted you're looking at a storm.
(laughing).
Well, but it's April, I think even our current ordinance is not incorporating for this one. I know, like, uh, my in-laws in Mora, they have no parking the same thing.
Yeah, Lester, yeah, I know Lester Prairie is the same thing, too.
Um, you know, we just know we can't park on the street overnight, um, and their house is downtown, um, where they only have a alley.
Oh, right, right, oh, yeah, absolutely.
And a couple spots, so we have to park on the street, and then we just have to figure out where to park it, if we stay. So, we can't even enforce our other ordinance, so if we, we think we can enforce these. Yeah.
We've been enforcing this one this last year quite a, quite a bit, so, I'm not sure how many months I would...
That would be a question for Gary.
Yeah. Gary, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
So, do you call when you're out plowing, or do you wait until the morning?
Usually, we leave it kind of up to the Sheriff's Department, is kind of what we, or if we have the issue, once Sheriff, you know...
Usually, the Sheriff's Department tries to contact the homeowners before they get told, and if we can't get any contact with them, then they get told.
And this would help enforce it if it was all year round, even when we don't get snowfalls, because then when Sheriff, they're driving through, you know, and everything else, they can actually give them a written warning or anything like that.
But we don't have a sheriff drive through between midnight and eight.
Sometimes we do.
But not consistently.
Not consistently, but sometimes we do.
That's not the ordinance that we have, so...
Yeah. Just from a plow, snow plowing operation standpoint, having a car parked in the road when you're out snow plowing is a pain in the butt.
I totally agree, I don't disagree at all.
One inch, half inch, sleet, everything.
I'm just looking at Minneapolis, they've fallen this year. They've had a horrible time.
Does anybody have an ordinance that says no parking on the street during any snowfall? That way, it wouldn't be like...
Like, you're not measuring, so, you know, you can't... Wouldn't that be considered a snow emergency, then, that there's no parking during a snowfall until parks curve to curve?
You don't want any falling.
Sometime, well, lately, we have been, yeah. You reduce your salt use.
Previously, we'd never, we always plowed when there were at least two inches, correct?
Usually, an inch or more than we plow, typically how I've been operating it, because if you let it an inch or more, because if you let it, you know, you get an inch, and two days later, you get another inch, and then we get that snowpack on the road, which isn't good, so...
Because I think it will affect some people that use the street as parking year-round, and just during snow events, have to find alternative measures.
Yeah, whenever, actually, I have to say, when I first started working with the city administration, that parking was very good, but now I know we've had a lot of turnover with homes and everything else, new homes, and that's tend to be where the issues are, so, good for that.
Can we bring it to like a work schedule?
Yeah, we can bring it to the next one.
And if there are any local, uh, she says three, two, or four, or five, I think.
Okay, I know this has been something that Councilmember Bolder brought up, um, so, just wanted to provide a little bit fa, a little bit of information on animal licensing. Um, we were also thinking about proposing an ordinance amendment to, for animal licensing, because, um, just because we have quite a bit of non-compliance, which is going on in almost every city. Um, it's kind of an outdated practice, it was, you know, kind of before, um, you know, to make sure animals were, uh, immunized properly, but also, if they got lost, um, they would, we would know who it was owned, the owner was. Um, now, we kind of have my, a lot of animals have microchips, or, um, or other, like, there's social media that helps find lost animals, or any animal that gets picked up goes to, right to the shelter. Um, so, just a little information about previous, um, we do offer an annual license and a lifetime license. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, so far, I mean, it's April, we've gotten three annual and four lifetime. We have a hundred and seventy lifetime licenses since two thousand and eleven, but, um, we aver, we, we get about, you know, thirteen, well, thirteen to seventeen annuals a year. Um, we rarely get phone calls on, on regarding licenses, um, like if an animal, most of the time when we do receive, um, calls about animals, they're, for some reason, they aren't wearing a collar anyways. Um, but, just, um, just the cost that involves, you know, that's involved, the staff time, um, we just feel that it's, a lot of cities are going away from this, and that, you know, it's something that we could go away from. We could, um, I know there are some people that have paid, I think it's ten dollars for a lifetime, and what's the annual?
Ten or seven.
Ten or seven. So, it's not a lot of money, but, um, we would maintain the historical information here for animals that are already registered, but, um, I did propose, I did put an article in the, from the Sargent Beyond, too, that kind of highlights the direction that this is going, and, um, just wanted to have a discussion on where we're headed.
If you're down here, how will you kind of discuss this project, or your bench, if you have a track of dogs?
Um, I would say we've had, yeah, 'cause the ones that we've had issues with that get picked up, like, they don't, for some reason, they, I think, since I've been here, we've had three or four that have gone to the shelter, and they aren't wearing a collar anyways, so...
Our dog license process hasn't, kind of, we would imagine, has been used for all since you've been here.
I mean, it could, it, it, the ones that we don't know, like, that get picked up, it's possible that there are some dogs that get picked up that we don't know, like, that just, somebody picks them up and brings them straight to the owner. But I, I mean, we're, the non-compliance, like, we aren't getting as many dogs licensed as we think we are, or as we, as there are in the city.
And, yeah, last year, Gary Stolkey did ask me for a couple of dogs to check on, and they were not in our true line.
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry.
And I think you're right, I think there's a lot of social media, I mean, most neighborhoods have a neighborhood Facebook, and at least one to these ones, like, Zogga dish, and they're found by their owners or something.
We have seven, so we have three annual and four lifetime. We could reimburse.
Any other questions? Uh, for motion, to approve, dog licenses, or, is that, is the ordinance two thirty?
Yep, two thirty.
Or, motion, to approve, ordinance two thirty, is the change. I'll make that motion. Or were you still talking?
No.
Has this been went through, um, any other commission?
It hasn't, um, because Planning Commission is, is more zoning based, and, um, yeah, so, this is a, this is an, uh, zoning ordinance, so it doesn't have to go to Planning Commission, so it would be...
Yeah, I was trying to go into any commission, not right.
Nope. Um, this one, because it's just city code, can come directly to City Council for a decision, it doesn't have to have a public hearing, and, um, just needs council input.
Any further discussion? I just, I disagree, and we should, I think we should reimburse, you know, because it's a, it's a year long, so, that's not a dish, so, so, or agreement of the change in the license, that just makes people pay for it, because that's a year long, so, I do agree with, I do agree with that. Any other comments? All pairs say aye.
Aye.
All pairs. All pairs carries three one. And that will take us to sixty-one, lawnmower purchase.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff is proposing the purchase of a new twenty nineteen Hustler lawnmower from Bob's Repair in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. Currently, city staff maintains about thirty-two acres of grass with one seventy-two inch Hustler mower. Having a second mower will help city staff for a few different reasons. During the spring and summer season, grass grows fast, making it, making it difficult to keep up with only one mower, because some of the parks need to be mowed more than once. During the spring and fall, staff is typically without seasonal help. This occupies Public Works, one Public Works employee for a good ap, good amount of the week, so by having two mowers and two, got, two guys mowing, it'll cut the time in half, so we can move on to different projects. Um, having a second mower will also help reduce downtime, reduce downtime when one machine is out, is out for repairs and maintenance. If staff were to also have an additional mower, it would be mostly used at the comp site and wastewater treatment facility during the summer months. Staff would be able to store the machine at the wastewater treatment plant, so this would prevent staff from having to drive the machine up and down the county road every week. Lastly, by purchasing an additional machine, it'll help keep, uh, help, uh, share the workload versus having one machine do all the work. This will help, help keep the overall hours and the workload low, resulting in a better trade-in value in the end. If an additional machine is purchased this year, staff would then budget to trade in the city's current seventy-two inch Hustler in two thousand and twenty. Staff would then alternate trading in mowers every other year, resulting in a fresh mower every year. This will help keep repair costs low and trade-in values high. Staff is proposing the new seventy-two inch Hustler mower from Bob's Repair in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. This will give city staff a fresh receipt, fresh machine with a five-year, uh, five-year, five-hundred-hour factory warranty. I bel, I got two quotes, one from MIT Distributing, the Toro seventy-two inch, it's a little bit smaller machine, and it has, uh, a little bit weaker horsepower and that sort of thing versus the Bob's machine, which is a little, a little bit more horsepower, faster travel speed, and a fancier seat for, uh, soaking up the bumps in the park. And it was budgeted, uh, twelve thousand dollars was budgeted for this year.
How long are we trading it right now?
Every two years.
Is it one?
Yep, so this one is due to be traded in this year, um, but given the hours on it and everything, we're, we should be fine stretching it another year, so... And then, it, it would still be that two, that two-year mark for both machines, but every year, we just kind of... but every year, we just kind of, kind of alternate which one gets traded in, so. Correct.
When was the last time you bought a, I feel like this came up like a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Okay.
This is last, this is, we bought this one in two thousand seventeen.
Oh, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, for lawnmowers especially. They don't, they pretty much don't stop all summer long. So I know Saint Bonnie does a program through Bob, um, a couple of other cities, they don't use Bob, but they, they alternate mowers. Majority of them get fresh mowers every year, I know that. I know Matrose does, and I believe Willcuna and Watertown do as well. Yeah, no, that's something we could discuss, absolutely.
And now, now this one, if you're saying you go three years, that even makes me more comfortable, two of them.
Given the workload it had.
And the balance, I get it.
Yeah, yep.
But like, uh, we talked, and if you got to drive down Conner thirty-fourth, I think it's a great idea to have one down there. I, I'm a, I'm a fan of that, even if the old one sits down there until it dies, I would be fine with that, but, you know. So I think that's good, but, um, I'd like to have a little more discussion sometime on the trade-ins and how long can I get more, and maintaining that, where, where that hourly time is and, uh.
Right, and kind of just, it kind of goes by market value, and then the year, of course, you know, if it's a newer year, and then that, that sort of thing, too, so, I mean, but it, yeah, we can definitely discuss that, for sure. Right, yeah, and the other one is a thirty-one. I tried to get him to quote me a higher one, but he won't, he's like, nope, this is what you need. No, they're both state bid as well, so.
I'll park it for tomorrow. Actually, it's good. They're going to have a lot of retirements coming up. The day and retirements are coming up, so.
Because of who we have in town, but if they get jobs out of town, you know, soon they're out, we could be in trouble pretty quick. Uh, but we're, we're fortunate, we're a lot better off than most communities, we, we talk, talk to some of that, so. Keep in, keep in mind the problem they have. Uh, the upcoming meetings are on the agenda, and I'll look for motion to adjourn.
Second.